This conference will now be recorded.
Good evening. We opened the Harwich Board of Selectments meeting for February 16, 2021, at six o'clock. And then went into open session, in an open session, excuse me, executive session. And the topic of interest in our executive session was discussion with respect to collective bargaining for the Highway Maintenance Employees Union. We had a good discussion and hopefully we'll report out the conclusion of that discussion next week. We then left the executive session, went into recess at six fifteen, approximately six fifteen, went into recess, and now I'll call to order the open session. I'll do that with a roll call vote. Don?
I'm here.
Ed?
Here.
And I'm here. I, we do have a quorum with three members. We do have two of our selectmen, Selectman Ford and Selectman McCaskill unable to make it tonight. And so with that, I'd ask you to join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. Our pledge allegiance to the flag
United States of America to the republic which stands
one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty, justice, or all. Thank you for joining me in that, in the pledge. We next move to weekly briefing.
Oh, Mr. Chair.
Oh, Don, I promised to call on Don first, and then I forgot. Don, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I regret to report that the town of Harwich has lost yet another treasured family member this past week, Cynthia McGalyard. Those of us who have been in town during the past thirty years remember her as the secretary staffing the Wreckin Youth in the second, in the first floor of what is now the Cape Cod Theater Company Arts Building. More recently, she could be seen as a longtime member of the town band, playing weekly at the gazebo during the summer and at every Memorial Day, as well as indoors at special occasions. I fondly remember her rolling that massive bass drum of hers up before a performance and then down afterwards at the steps of the Brooks Park Gazebo. But the most important thing I'll miss about Cynthia is that irrepressible smile of hers. It was one that could light up a room. I don't think I can ever remember her in any angry moment. We could all use a little bit more of that in the world today. So I ask you to join me in a moment of silence for Cynthia. Thank you.
Thank you, Don, for that, for the well-felt tribute. Next on our, our agenda is the weekly briefing, and Joe, I'll turn it over to you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. On the moment, I'm going to turn it right over to our interim Health Director, our Assistant Town Administrator, Megan Eldridge, with many updates, I believe, or certainly substantive updates on COVID-19. So with that, Mr. Chairman, I would turn it over to Megan.
Good evening, guys. We have some good news, some good COVID news for the town of Harwich this week. We have been downgraded from red to yellow. We're no longer a high-risk community. We have gone down in our positivity rate, and we're below 5%. So the previous two weeks' data showed that we have a positivity rate of 4.84. We're down from 5.0, I believe, 3.8 last week. So we had a total of 1,282 tests administered over the previous two weeks, and 62 of those tests were positive. So the number of tests we're administering is relatively the same, and we're going down in the number that are positive. So we are headed, again, in the right direction. It's lower than we were a week ago. Our caseload, of course, continues to go up. There's only one way to go, and you've got a caseload of COVID. We were at 547 cases for Harwich since the beginning of COVID about a year ago. Right now, we're still following about 32 active cases of Harwich residents. We did have a fewer, a bit fewer active cases than we had about a week ago. So again, we're going in the right direction. The positives that we've received in the last seven days, at least 70, 75% of them are all connected to household spread. They have been reported positive in a household that had previously had a positive in the last couple of weeks. So we're, we're seeing more household spread than unknown spread. It's really quite difficult to contain it once it's made it into a household with many members, especially if some of those members are children. Obviously, kids can't isolate by themselves as much as grown adults can. So when a child becomes positive, it's typical for the rest of the household to become positive eventually. So we were following, we're following a few cases now that are our household spread. So that, again, isn't the greatest of news for those positive people. However, it is nice to know that it's not spreading so much within the community, and it's now spreading more so in the household. It's important to answer that phone when you do get a phone call. If you've, if you've been positive, if you have a positive test result, if you can answer the phone when the VNA calls or a contact tracer calls, not only are they putting information into the database as far as the numbers that we have, but they can offer a lot of information on how to keep the other members of your household free of illness and offer some resources such as grocery delivery services or any other medication delivery or even financial assistance, showing you where to find those resources. So it's very important to answer that phone when someone calls from the VNA, and they'll leave a message, and please, please call them back, so we can try to stop the spread within the households. We also had an ice hockey cluster of positives that, not so much the high school age kids, but the older, the older young adults in the twenty-year-old times, in the twenty-year-old age group that are, are playing for a young adult hockey team that are now experiencing a cluster. Um, vaccine update. We're still in phase two, one, which is people 75 and older. We are hoping at this time that the Department of Public Health keeps us at that level for at least another couple of weeks, so we can take care of the backlog of the people who are 75 and older that haven't been able to get vaccinated. The last thing we want here on the Cape is to open it up to another priority group when we haven't even touched the surface of the one we're currently in. We have, we, as in the health agents across the Cape, have been talking amongst ourselves in the county, Barnstable County, trying to find the best way to get more vaccine down here on the Cape. We have 975 doses that the county gets every week, and they've been trying to spread that thinly across the Cape from Falmouth to Truro, and it's just not enough. And even the, the private pharmacies, CVS, Stop &amp; Shop, they're not getting enough to fill the, the need either. I did have a very good conversation with Outer Cape Health today. They are getting vaccine, and it's not only for their patients. They are able to set aside some vaccine for Harwich residents. You do need to call ahead for an appointment, and you have to be in one of the priority groups, phase one or 75 and older. They are also working with Council on Aging and the Health Department to get a list of all of the homebound people that we have in town, and mercifully, they are not going with the strict definition of homebound, which means, the strict definition is if you are homebound and cannot leave your home without the assistance of an ambulance. Outer Cape realizes and recognizes that there are quite a few people who live in Harwich who haven't left their houses in nearly a year, and it's not because of a physical reason. And they are willing to work with our Council on Aging and get those people vaccinated within their homes as well. So the conversation I had today was positive, and we're hoping that Outer Cape can order some vaccine for Harwich residents in the next week or two, and we'll be reaching out to our homebound residents and making appointments for those people. And again, if you or someone you know is homebound, please make sure you are on the radar of our Council on Aging. They keep a list of people to check on, and if you are not on that list, we don't know about you, and we can't help you if we don't know about you. So make sure that you have made yourself aware to Council on Aging, and they will make sure that they have your contact information. Vaccine distribution. Barnstable County is getting, they say about eight to nine percent of our, of the vaccine is getting to Barnstable County. The weekly vaccine database or bulletin they send out is showing that majority of the vaccine has been distributed in the Suffolk County area. We're trying to address that inequity. Down here on the Cape, we have the oldest demographic of all of New England. Barnstable County has highest number of people who are over the age of 65 than any other county in all of New England, and giving us 8% of the vaccine during this phase does not seem equitable. So we, we are working on it. We do have the ear of Senator Seer, who is trying to bring this up to the governor's office, and hopefully, hopefully someone will start listening to, to the needs of the Cape, because they're just not getting that. We get hundreds of calls in the Health Department, mostly frustrated people, and we understand everyone's frustrated with this process. The 211 phone line that the state has given out has been helpful for some, but most of the feedback we get is negative. That the 211 phone line is referring people back to the Barnstable County COVID hotline, helpline, and that, that helpline is, is overwhelmed as well. They've, they've gotten more than 20,000 calls in the last few weeks. It's just not sustainable. So we do need, we need something to change, and the health agents are lobbying for that. So please bear with us. We are working on it. It's just not as quick as we'd like it to be. Um, and then again, the last thing I wanted to say is about testing, and as always, we need to continue to monitor new cases and make sure we're stopping the spread. The answer isn't just vaccination. We still have a pandemic to deal with, and we're still dealing with isolation and quarantine and making sure that people aren't going out when they're sick or when they're not feeling well, and if someone in their household has been quarantined or has been told to isolate. It's so important to stay home during that time, so you're not spreading it. And there are still sites available for free testing, and Barnstable County has partnered with Cape Cod Healthcare and Outer Cape Health to have various test sites across the Cape. There's a couple of hotline numbers you can call, and usually you'll get a test in the, in, within 24 hours. So I just want to make sure everyone's still aware of those things and are with us. This has been a long process, but we're, we're working on it. Thank you.
Thank you, Megan. Just one comment. I gather that this week now is a little raising some fears because it's school vacation week. Do you, any particular comments on that or guidance?
Well, the, anytime there's a holiday or a vacation week, we, we expect a surge about two weeks after that ends, and it would be such a great thing if we didn't have to deal with that. I know the schools have sent out notices to parents, giving them guidance on what the state travel order is. If you leave the state and you come back, you, you're still subject to the travel order, and that is even if you've been vaccinated at this point. So if you leave the state and you come back, you have to either quarantine, self-quarantine for 10 days, or you have to get a test, a negative PCR test, within 72 hours of your return or your departure. So those, those things still need to be adhered to. It's, it's only going to not spread if, if people, if people stop gathering with each other outside of their households. And one week of school vacation is going to impact our caseload, and I would hate to see us go back into the red when we just got out of it, and we're seeing the light at the end of the tunnel. So if you do have plans during this school vacation week, make sure that you stay inside your bubble and you stay with the, the family and, and your household members that you normally deal with. And if you're going to go outside your bubble, make sure you're taking precautions. You're always wearing your mask. You try to keep your distance. You're washing your hands more than you ever have before. But, but also, don't go back to school if you've traveled and you haven't gotten your test yet. So it's, it spreads through the school, and then it spreads to the parents. And it causes a lot of problems with schools. They have to close classrooms down. They have to send kids home, and then they, they may not have enough staff to cover in-person and remote work. So if we can all just stick to this for a while longer, we, we may, may be able to get out of it a little on the better side.
Thank you, Megan. Other questions or comments for Megan? Joe, I'll turn it back to you then.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and I believe our Chamber of Commerce Executive Director is queued up with some, I don't know if it's good news or excellent news, but I'll defer to her, Mr. Chairman.
She's laughing, so I hope I
Something's, something's up.
Well, good evening, everyone. Yes, I do have some exciting news. As Megan just said, stay in your bubble. Well, I've been in my bubble way too long that I've now come up with some exciting new ways to showcase our businesses and the community. We're now going to be videotaping and then uploading to our social media and YouTube three new shows, which will showcase various sectors of the industries we have in Harwich. The first one is called Small Town with Big Tastes Food Tour. Myself and Rich Kristoff, our Chamber President and the manager of 400 East, will be interviewing the owners and chefs of our area restaurants and tasting their great food, but also showing what they're doing to make their customers feel that it's safe to come out and dine inside, as well as what they'll be doing for the spring and upcoming season. The second show will highlight our hospitality partners, the Inns, Bed and Breakfast Hotels, and more. So we're going to be calling that Your Home Away From Home. And then the third is called Small Talk with Local Businesses, and this will then take care of all of our other sectors. We're very fortunate to have so much in Harwich, from the arts to a lavender farm, cranberry bogs, architects, retailers of all kinds. So we're going to share that with everyone. So we're now going to be a YouTuber, but we're excited for that. And you know, there's, we're going to be on the road exploring and sharing all that Harwich has. There are seven villages, and we're going to share it all with everyone. So we're excited about that. And then today, we just got word, I'm so excited to congratulate them, and I've already done it on our social media, but the La Quasimodo Resort and Golf Club for their sixth year as a Forbes five-star resort recipient, and it's their first five-star for 28 Atlantic. And the restaurant is one of 73 in the world. So we're very proud of them, and I'd like to just recognize them tonight, but also to congratulate them. And that'll be one of our many restaurants we'll get to showcase. So that's our exciting news for tonight.
I like it. Any other, any questions for Cindy? Comments? Thanks again.
You're so welcome.
Public comments. I, Joe, I have some people, but they're on specific topics. Is there anybody you know that's called in for a general public comment?
None for general comment, Mr. Chairman.
We'll move next to annual committee presentations, and first on the agenda is the Traffic Committee. And so we really have at least two. We have Jerry Beltis and Linda Sibula on the, on the call, so.
Good evening, Larry.
Good evening, Joe. Jerry.
We're going to do a presentation tonight. Because of me being, having a medical event six weeks ago, I'm relying on Linda to do the presentation, because I haven't been able to stay up to snuff on all the stuff that's been going on. So if you will allow Linda to do the presentation, that'd be great.
Well, that's a stretch, but Linda, you're, certainly go with that.
Here we go. The woman bailing out the guys again.
Okay, okay.
You knew it wasn't going to be easy, Jerry. I asked
We, we did submit to the board our annual report, as well as a brief memo indicating answers to the questions that you had asked. Our attendance has been good. Our members are sworn in. The ethics testing we have completed by Beltis and Sibula, and Jerry Scannell is in process right now. We've been posting our minutes and agendas as we have them, and minutes are posted as soon as the committee approves them. We have three members from the Town Administrator, Aram Goshgarian, Lincoln Hooper, Griffith Ryder, and the Board of Selectment appoints either two or four, and that's Beltis, Sibula, and Scannell. We do have an open position. We have an individual who has expressed interest. He's going to be coming to our next committee meeting, and then he will decide if he would like to apply for the position. If he does, I hope it finds a, a positive vote from the Board of Selectmen. Are there any questions? Some of the things that we, one of the things that we want to do in this coming year would be to work on some kind of line-of-sight policy that might have some procedures and a mechanism whereby people can be made to cut back their bushes. Right now, it's, if somebody complains, or they might get a little cutback, or something might happen. We have some pretty dangerous intersections, and so many bushes and trees are impeding vision. That it really is a traffic safety issue.
Thank you, Linda. Your last comments are are important. We do get a lot of emails worried about line-of-sight issues. Do you, will you hold, as you move forward, will you hold public hearings on that to get as much input as you can from the various neighborhoods?
We should, we shall do that. We, I mean, people are always invited to our meetings. What we will probably do is, at our next meeting, when we schedule it, start talking about what this could entail. We are going to be gathering. There are some other communities that do have line-of-sight bylaws and et cetera. So we'll be gathering those and seeing what we can pull together, and then, yes, we will absolutely want input from the community.
That's great, because I know we're, stay on the Freeman Street at that intersection. I know I've gotten emails, people wanting to be a part of that discussion. So I appreciate that. Other comments or questions for Linda? Don?
Yeah, Linda said just before, but I'm going to repeat it again, because you never want to pass up an opportunity to educate the public. I, I can't state this too often, that most people have the, are under the impression that they own the property right up to the edge of a roadway, and that's where an awful lot of this is happening, because the road layouts are only paved to a portion of what the actual true layout is in most major roads. And when people do that, they're acting as if we're being hostile to their property rights, and it's not at all that. That's the reason the postal boxes are put what they are, where they are. They're not on somebody's property. They're actually in the road with the layout when they're put there. So the more people understand that there's an obligation for this, and it's not punitive, the better off everyone will be.
Thank you, Don. Other comments, questions? If not, thank you for the
Linda had a comment.
Wanted to comment?
I was just going to thank Don for that reminder to people, because when you come up to a curve, an intersection, so many of the roads on the Cape curve. This is in New York City, where everything is nicely perpendicular, and you can see all the way down the street, and there's nothing in your way. Curves, the hills, make it very difficult to safely make a turn. But thank you, Don.
We are working on one more intersection of 39 and Pleasant Bay Road. There's, as you're coming out of Old Chathammont to 39, the angle of the sightline is terrible there. We're looking to try and do an improvement in that intersection. There has been communication with the property owner, who's willing to give the town a permanent easement, to do some sort of a jug handle, so that you can be square to the road, be able to look down 39, and get a better line of sight. It's a multi-step process. We have to work with the property owner and engineering to figure out how much land needs to be taken or put under an easement. Once that's taken, then it has to go through the professional persons in the Town Administrator's office and legal to draw up a easement for the town, so that that can be used. Once the easement is done, then the engineering can get into work, and along with a contractor in the Highway Department, to actually do the building of the, the handle, or the, the jug handle, so to speak, to get in there. There's been discussion about making that a one-way in and different types of uses of that intersection, but the best one that we've come up with is this permanent easement, and it's going to take a little bit of a while to get it done and, and working with legal and engineering.
Thank you, Jerry.
We did try to get this project put on the capital plan, but for some reason, it, it didn't make it. So if we could work with Town Administration to make sure that this at least gets on the capital plan, because there'll be a little bit of money that will be required to make this happen, but we would appreciate that assistance.
Okay, and the Town Administrator is on the, on this meeting, so.
I know he is. That's why I said.
That was a nod. Yes.
Okay.
Thank you, Joe.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, thank you. We'll move next to the Treasure Chest Committee, and Joe, that's basically been shut down, so you can read the, you can handle that, I guess.
Certainly. The Treasure Chest closed on March 11, 2020. Excuse me, and the Treasure Chest Committee has been inactive since. There have been no meetings of the committee since their last presentation. The DBW Director has stated he cannot recommend reopening until COVID-19 is no longer with us, and currently, the Treasure Chest building is being used by Highway and Maintenance Department for winter storage of some equipment.
Thank you, Joe, and we're hoping for that to I'm still hanging on, I'm still hanging on to things, by the way, I need to get rid of. And so I'm hoping it opens, surely doesn't stay closed forever. Next on the agenda is Voter Information Committee, and Chris, I see you're, you're ready and willing.
I am. Thank you for having us. Chris Joyce for Voter Information Committee. Our speakers are Peg Rose, Emily Mylan, and Pam Grosswell. And our report is in your packet. I want to report on the three or four questions that you asked of us. Our attendance has been excellent. I think we've had, in the last year or so, maybe one absence. We're all sworn in. Ethics testing, three of the four are completed, but the fourth, I'm sure, will be done by the end of this month. And all of our agendas and minutes, we're up to date. Our minutes are posted. Our minutes are posted. I think some good news, uh, you know, we closed down our Know Your Town program. If you remember, we had department heads, uh, at a forum in partnership with Brooks Free Library, with the presentations, uh, last year, and we're going to kick that off again. Uh, let's have the remaining department heads, and, uh, we're going to try, we're going to be very successful at podcasts, new technology for us, um, and we'll be able to solicit questions ahead of time for the department heads. Uh, so we're hoping the taping starts this month, um, you know, it can kind of be done anytime, it doesn't have to be done like we did when we'd invite folks into the library. So, we're getting pretty excited about, about doing that, and we'll probably group like departments together, so we have a podcast of a reasonable amount of time to listen to. The other thing, you know, this is our big season for voter information, and, uh, Joe and I talked a long time ago, but we've set up a date, uh, can, subject to change, but to review the warrant on April twentieth. Won't be exactly like we've done in the past, because of, uh, uh, room limitations and socially distancing, but I think we did a good job last year with Carol Coppola and Joe, uh, moderating. Well, that's the plan. Uh, the other thing is, uh, we plan to tape, uh, interviews, we've chatted with Jamie Goodwin, and, uh, Channel eighteen manager. Uh, so we'll tape interviews with all of the, the candidates running for office. So, I think there are seven or eight vacancies this year, and we're noodling around on how, uh, if we can handle a forum for the contested, um, slots. We know there's, there is the Board of Selectmen vacancy, uh, that is contested, so more to follow on that. And the other thing we're drafting is a, a trifold, um, that we're calling a Guide to Town Meeting, uh, so I need to have Joe take a look at that. We, it's in pretty good shape now, but, uh, we need some, uh, some review from the town, and we'd like to publish it and have it available, um, so people can kind of get ready for town meeting. Some important dates in there, some definitions, uh, anyway. So, my final, my final comment before, if you have questions, is we're short one member on our committee, and so we're asking the interview committee to, uh, keep their eye out for someone to take that fifth slot for us as they come in for interviews. Questions?
Questions or comments for Chris? Uh, Don?
Yeah, actually, Chris, you just did the, uh, infomercial that you needed to do. Well, we have absolutely no candidates, we'd love to have some, because it's an important committee, it kind of helps the public uh, understand and engage with the candidates and what the issues are. It, through the years, it's been extraordinarily helpful within town. If anybody wants to join up, uh, all they have to do is fill out a citizens' activity form and hand it into the front office, and I can assure you, you, as soon as we can get a candidate, we'll look into them and interview them.
That's great, we're a good committee, work well together, and, and we have some laughs, so that's good.
As Don refers, and I think is your discussion, in our day and age, uh, your, uh, your committee is vital to us. More information we can get out in a timely fashion, the better off we are, so we all very much appreciate your efforts.
Thank you very much, I'll make sure the committee knows that, thank you.
We'll move on then to the, uh, next agenda item, is there's no, nothing for public hearing? Our next agenda item is, uh, Joe, I'll turn this to you. On the consent, excuse me, consent agenda, uh, Don, or I add, do you want to make a motion on this?
Mr. Chair, I move that we approve the following consent agenda items. A, vote to approve the town administrator's recommendation to grant permission request of ENSAR EverSource Energy of installing approximately twenty-five foot of conduit and cable in one handhold, uh, in town road to provide electrical service to a customer of thirteen sixty-one Orleans Road. And B, vote to accept a gift from the Harwich Athletic Association doing business as a Harwich Mariners in the amount of seventy-five thousand dollars for its efforts to replace the existing scoreboard and field lighting at White House Field.
Thank you, Don, and Ed, second, is there any, uh, further discussion? If not, I'll take a vote, Ed?
Hi.
Don?
Hi.
And I'm an I, so it's passed, Joe, three, uh, zero. Next item on the agenda is new business, and, uh, Joe, there's a couple items here, I'm gonna turn it over to you at this point.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chairman, so to you and the members of the board. Um, the first two items, as you can see, uh, the expectation on these is, um, meant to be a discussion amongst the board uh, in response to the, uh, findings that, um, I've made regarding the two recently held, uh, hearings. Um, as you recall, the board, uh, tapped me to be hearing officer on allegations and alleged violations uh, relating to, uh, Amber Pizza and separately Port Restaurant and Bar Incorporated. Um, you'll see what's included in the packet is really a comprehensive report out from that. Uh, and as you'll see in my memorandum, my recommendation at this point is to hold, uh, penalty in abeyance until the board has a discussion on what you would like to do for next steps. Um, Mr. Chairman, we are joined this evening by, uh, by our counsel, um, Attorney Greg Corbo from KP Law, has proved invaluable to me as a resource during these hearings, uh, and Attorney Corbo is here this evening. Uh, if the board wishes to engage in a discussion on, um, options and next steps, um, Attorney Corbo is ready to respond.
Let me, uh, thank you, Attorney Corbo, let me just ask the, uh, my fellow board, the, uh, allegations, I think are very specific and well spelled out, but just before we move to the, uh, next step, are there any questions regarding the, uh, information that Joe provided us from the hearing?
No.
Don, I assume you, you're satisfied with the notes as well. Uh, Greg, let me then, I just wanted to double-check that. Uh, Greg, let me turn it over to you, then discuss what our possible next steps would be.
Thank you, through you, Mr. Chair, uh, to members of the board and town administrator and those present, uh, good evening, my name is Greg Corbo, uh, from the law firm of KP Law, we serve as town council to the town of Harwich. Um, and as Mr. Powers indicated, I've been helping him with these particular matters. Um, so, to summarize where, where we've been so far is, um, the town administrator has conducted a hearing on charges that these two particular establishments violated, um, the governor's COVID safety regulations on several occasions, um, during the, uh, spring and summer of twenty-twenty. Um, as a result of those hearings, the town administrator did find that violations were proven as to both establishments. In addition to those particular violations, um, it has come to my attention, um, and I believe yours as well, um, that both of these establishments have been subject to numerous complaints, um, from residents and others in the neighborhood, particularly concerning noise, and, um, there have been several, um, noise hearings in the past as to, um, establishments in the Harwich Port area, including, um, at least one of these establishments. Um, but the, the practice of, of the board, um, in taking disciplinary action has always been to move forward based on com, specific complaints that were verified by the police department. However, it's my understanding that the resident complaints have gotten to a point where, um, the board may feel, um, compelled to take some further action to at least hear those complaints. Um, and it's my understanding that, um, both of these establishments have seasonal all-alcohol licenses, which, um, come up for renewal in March, um, and if the board were to be so inclined, um, in connection with an application for renewal, the board could hear these complaints and, and make a decision as to whether or not to renew those licenses. Now, under Chapter one thirty-eight of the Massachusetts General Laws, um, an applicant for renewal is, um, does have the benefit of a presumption of renewal, which means that, all things being equal, once, if you've had a license in the past, you submit a renewal application, it's automatically renewed, unless there is some cause for the board not to renew. And, um, cause not to renew may include, um, evidence of violations as well as other factors that go into the original grant of a license. As you may be aware, when originally granting a license, um, the board is, is required to look at certain factors in determining the public need, um, which includes, um, things like, um, the number of existing license holders, traffic and noise in the area, the opinions of the neighborhood, and the overall reputation of, of the applicant. And of course, when you grant the license, you make this judgment prior to the applicant being there. Um, and so on renewal, you would look at these same factors and decide whether it's still consistent with the public interest for this licensee to be there. Um, and if not, you can make a decision to not renew. So, that would require its own public hearing, um, and during that hearing, you could hear from witnesses, including members of your police department, um, as well as members of the public, and you can make a decision as to whether or not to renew the license. The town administrator's recommendation here is that with respect to the COVID violations, that you hold off on imposing any discipline, um, until after you make that decision. Um, and if you decide to renew the licenses for this upcoming year, then you can always pick up the issue of, of discipline based on the COVID violations and the nature of, of a suspension or a warning, or, um, something of that nature. So, so that's one way of going. Um, the other way to go is in the more traditional way, which is to, um, treat these, these things completely separately, make a decision on discipline, and, um, either issue a suspension or a warning or a revocation, um, and then, um, renew the licenses in March as a matter of course.
Thank you, Greg. Uh, Joe, you have follow-up comments to that?
No, I think Attorney Corbo covered it, um, comprehensively. Uh, really, I, I stand ready to answer questions from the board as to what you think you would like to do next. I will say that, uh, if the board is, uh, leaning towards having a public hearing relative to the renewals, uh, that for these establishments, given, uh, all that's transpired and given the amount of public input that is, um, indicated is out there, uh, I would recommend a dedicated meeting, uh, separate from your regular board meeting, if that's the board's will.
Don, you have, uh, comments, then?
Yeah, I have two comments, uh, the first one is, I, I would like to go ahead with a hearing, and the standalone meeting sounds like a good idea. The second one is, whatever we're gonna do on this, I wanna make sure that we have a full con, complement of board members hearing that, uh, hearing, uh, so, other than instructing the town administrator to go back and set that up, I don't think it's appropriate to take any further actions tonight.
Thank you, Don, Ed?
Um, I agree.
I do as well, I'd like to, uh, take your, Greg, your first, uh, option of at least sharing the information together, because I think that'll give us a fuller picture of what the issues are, and, uh, and I would also agree with what Don has said, is, and Joe has recommended a separate hearing.
So, Mr. Chairman, if I may, if we've heard you correctly, then that would be predicated on, uh, applications for renewal being received uh, during the month of March, is that correct?
Correct.
All right, and so generally speaking.
When would you try to schedule a meeting?
Thank you, so the, um, yeah, the general timeline for seasonal licenses, we've just received the, uh, material from the ABCC with the strict reminder that they should not be released to the applicants prior to March. Um, as you know, with the annual licenses, uh, they're, they're meant to be, uh, dispatched in a certain month, that month is March. So, uh, staff is prepared to send those materials out the end of February, and upon receipt of the application coming back for renewal, uh, we would then work on, uh, Attorney Corbo, I believe it's a fourteen-day requirement on that hearing notice, is that correct?
That's correct.
So, so we would work within the, when the application is filed. So, really, there's, and if I can say this, and if counsel would, uh, correct me, please, uh, if I stray. So, really, there's an element here that's incumbent upon the, the, uh, licensees to initiate the proceedings of, uh, seeking renewal. And so if they submit their renewal applications in good order in early March, I would, uh, suggest that we can get the hearing done, uh, by the middle of, middle of March, based on the notice requirements. Uh, if the application doesn't come in until later in March, that would push off the hearing, I think, until closer to April, um, if I understand the requirements correctly.
I, I see Greg is not disagreeing with you, so I, I assume that's, I think, I assume your understanding is correct.
Yes, I, I am not disagreeing with Mr. Powers, and I agree, do agree with what he just stated.
Okay, so, uh, Don?
Yeah, I wanna point out, just to flesh out what Joe said, what Greg is, uh, implying is that, uh, there is a specified time period for notifying the public about a public hearing. So, should this drag out and the application doesn't come in, we can't hold the public hearing until we're aware that there is an intent to renew, at which point the clock starts for us to be able to put it in the newspaper and make it a, a public hearing, uh, announcement. So, the ball is definitely in the court, uh, the two companies then, if they, if they submit it later, we have to notify the public later.
My only addition to that would be is that, uh, this is a, uh, these hearings are critical that, that it's, public knows about them, because we've had a lot of, uh, as Greg, you mentioned, we've had concern and, and and people want to weigh in on these hearings, and so I need to, uh, we'll need to play that schedule out, as you state.
Larry?
Yes, Ed?
Yeah, um, I just, uh, suggest that, uh, when we do, do receive the, the application and go about setting the, the hearing date, that, um, if, uh, that, if we're going to, uh, set it, um, uh, for a standalone meeting, um, that meeting be on a Monday.
Uh, thank you, Ed, uh, we have done one of those, because if, if any of those people are used to watching us on Mondays, so there's some, and then we can hold our regulars, Board of Selectmen on Tuesday then, if we come to that.
Yeah, it would also, um, allow the best chance of, of having all of us present.
My, uh, just for the record, I, I will be off Cape the last week in March.
Yep.
So, hopefully, we'll move ahead and they'll apply, so we can, before then. Okay, uh, Joe and Greg, have we done enough tonight? We don't need a motion or anything, right? We've, we're okay?
Um, no, um, Mr. Chair, I don't, I don't believe that you need it, need a motion. Joe and I have sufficient direction, and we will, um, move forward at the appropriate time and let the board know, you know, once the applications are received, and we can then start looking at the calendar for, um, hearing dates.
Okay, thank you, I think as both Don and Ed's implied, at least, uh, we're anxious to, this has been dragging on for a long time, we're anxious to bring this to closure.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, and thank you Attorney, Attorney Corbo for participating tonight.
Thank you. Uh, Chief, did you wish to comment? I see you're, uh, you've come alive. Oh, this is a different next topic.
Yes.
Excuse me, you can say it, I'll turn this back to Joe then.
I was gonna say, Chief, I had your back, I know Chief Gilmet is ready, uh, and I think eager to discuss, uh, Open Business Item C, uh, which is to approve his appointment of our new dispatcher. Uh, so with that, uh, Mr. Chairman, if I may, I would turn it over to Police Chief Gilmet.
Have a good night, everyone.
Thank you, Chief, and I also see Deputy K is on as well, so we, we welcome both of you. Thank you, Chief, and I also see Deputy is on as well, so we welcome both of you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Just you you have my memo and you pack it, it's it's fairly brief, but it does lay out the fact that we have been short one. One dispatcher at Harwich PD since right around this time last year. And the delay has been caused by obviously by COVID and budget concerns, but we finally did get underway. In late fall of 2020 with our process. And we're very pleased that to recommend Kylie Sears for this position she's on with us tonight. Kylie Kylie has roots on Cape Cod, so I'm pleased to report that. She attended DY High School and she's a current resident of Dennis. She's got a bachelor's degree in business operations management from the University of Massachusetts Dartmouth. And she's currently been working as a legal assistant for a local attorney. She did an outstanding job and the process came in as the entire committee's number one candidate. And I was very impressed when we interviewed Kylie and we are really truly looking forward to bringing her on to our dispatch team at Harwich PD.
Thank you, Chief. Don?
Mr. Chair, if you would accept a motion. Upon the recommendation of the police chief, I move that we appoint Kylie Sears for the position of police emergency telecommunications dispatcher. The HPD effective February 22, 2021, annual salary of $45,199.64.
The motion and welcome Kylie to Harwich.
Kylie, I join that to show us how open minded we are. We're accepting someone from out of town, so. We have a motion in a second. Any other comments? Take a roll call. As I said, you're three of us here tonight. Don?
Aye.
Ed?
Aye.
And I'm an aye. Chief, thank you very much for finding outstanding people for your department. And Kylie, welcome again.
Welcome aboard, Kylie.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next on the agenda is arboretum and Joe, I'll turn it to you and I assume you'll probably pass it on to Robin, but we'll see.
I I certainly will, Mr. Chairman. Before I do that, I'd like to say that. You know, in this era of good feeling with the last agenda item and this agenda item, I think this is a. What you have, what you'll have before you in just a moment through our cemetery director. Is a significant amount of work done by by Robin in an effort to get. The arboretum and I'll let her say all the great things about it other than. Robin really does has done remarkable work. It is a incredibly thorough document. And and I know the number of outside agencies and people that she's worked with. So with that, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to turn it right over to our cemetery director to explain the purpose of this. And I think it's just a wonderful idea with a wonderful name.
Good evening, Robin.
Hi, Larry. Thank you. So I just want to, there were so many people involved in this project, so I just I feel like I need to mention them and I'm just gonna give a. Little bit of an update on it. So. The project began in 2017 and at the time Jimmy Marsline was alive. And he would visit his wife's grave in Island Pond every single day. That being said, Jimmy was a stickler for everything he wanted done in the cemetery. From pointing out what drainage he wanted updated, improvements to the property and nobody knows that more than me and Leo. He rode me pretty hard. He was a great guy. Anyways, when he died in 2018, the Cemetery Commission voted unanimously to name the arboretum after him. He is buried in the center of the arboretum property and he loved he went there every single day. So the following people helped me with this project. It was a huge undertaking. So Amy Uzowski, our conservation administrator, she helped me with all the conservation parcels. David Gonzales Gonzalez from the Horticultural Instructor for the Cape Cod Regional Technical High School. He had his students initially go out and help identify our first 25 trees. Mark Smith from the Montemoy Regional School District helped me with developing some curriculum for the Montemoy School District. The kids are gonna be using it for different. Fields of study and some of the kids who are homeschooling now are already using it. So we also have AmeriCorps Cape Cod. We had Hannah Schmidt originally. She was my AmeriCorps member last year. Who helped with everything from descriptions to getting all my paperwork together and now this year we have Ashley Boudreaux. We have her two days a week and then. Caroline is also working two days a week with Amy Uzowski, so we have a lot of AmeriCorps members in there. They've done everything from invasive species removal, edging out the trees, pruning, mulching. They're a fantastic resource for the town. Russ Norton, he's the educator for the Cape Cod Cooperative Extension. He assisted in verified all of the tree identification. He did soil, 500 page soil report for the town for free. Dan Pelletier from the Water Department provided the mapping. And he mapped where all the trees were on the property, which was needed for accreditation. Jerry Schuman and Diane DeGeneres, they're both from the Garden Club. They helped me with my arboretum plan, which is in your packet. They went through and talked about all the different things that we should include in the plan as well. We had a ton of garden club members help us with watering and a whole bunch of other improvements. The Cemetery Commissioners, Cindy Eldridge, Steve Stephen Connor, Robert Thompson. As well as our past members Karen Young and Will Remillard. Of course, you Board of Selectmen for allowing us to name this after Jimmy Marsline, which was a win for everyone and for your support. And with Joe, Joe has been very helpful and with me going over the application. We've had several meetings, proofreading it, changing stuff around to make sure everything was included that needed to be included. And lastly, for most, most people don't really know about it, so. The Marseline Arboretum is a 25 acre piece of property in Harwich Center. It's a public garden and a historic site. We have over 50 species identified already of trees and shrubs in this. It's truly a gem in the heart of Harwich. It's never been more evident this year with COVID for people to have outside passive recreation. And it's good for their health and well being for the entire population of the town. The arboretum is a place where you can experience and provide exceptional opportunities for teaching, research and outreach. You're never too young or too old to learn. And the arboretum will cultivate cultivate our residents and the students who value our natural resources. And desire to learn about how to recognize the impact on the world around them. There's only 13 accredited arboretums in the state of Massachusetts. Four are owned by towns or cities and only two other cemeteries are arboretums in the state currently. That's Mount Auburn and Cambridge and then the Newton Cemetery and which is by the city of Newton. So the Marseline Arboretum will be the first accredited arboretum on Cape Cod. And will be completely free and open daily to the public. So I'm hoping.
Explain to us why accredited, what that means?
So you have to submit all the paperwork that was in your packet. That I sent to you and you go before arbor.net. And they make sure and verify that we have identified all those trees. All of the trees will be labeled and they're labeled on the map now, but we are gonna be getting. Tree tags that will identify the trees, so if somebody went into the cemetery and wanted to find a ginkgo tree, they could find a ginkgo tree. A red maple tree or whatever, so the accreditation just is a verification that it is. It is harbor.
If I could add to that, as you see in the packet, it's a rigorous application and a rigorous process. That's vetted by the Morton Arboretum, the Botanic Gardens Conservation International. As well as the American Public Gardens Association, so you know, no different than a professional accreditation. This is a serious process and the end result would really be a feather in the cap of the town. And certainly through our cemetery director, if we were to achieve this accreditation.
Yeah, I I hope it's well publicized because it's a great write up of Jimmy Marsline. And and the plot diagram is is very helpful as well. Don?
Yeah, if a motion is in order, I'd like to make one.
Please do.
Okay, I moved that we approve the Arbnet Arboretum Accreditation for the Marsline Arboretum at Island Pond.
Ed, will you second it? I'll second the motion. Second, okay, Ed, the second is. Thank you, Ed. Any any discussion from anyone that's joined our meeting?
Yeah, I'm not sure Jimmy would recognize the James G. Part, but. Think that he was being recognized.
Well, it's fantastic we're doing this, Robin, and thank you for for all your work on this and Joe for helping. I agree, it'll be a feather in our cap to be able to. Although I hate to, I I assume you. It'll be very obvious. I'll show my ignorance of my lack of knowledge of trees. But I take kindly your comment that you and old people can learn, so I'll give it a shot. We have a motion in a second. Take a roll call, Don?
Aye.
Ed?
Aye.
And I'm an aye, so fantastic. Thank you again.
Thank you.
Joe, I'll turn the next item to you on the agenda.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Actually, the next two items on the agenda are related. We did separate them out. Because it would be two different actions by the board, but we're also joined this evening by Sean Preventure. Sean works for the, I always get it wrong, but DCR Division of Conservation and Recreation. Mr. Chairman, as I mentioned, right before I left Wellfleet to work here in Harwich. Mr. Preventure and I were able to work on a project somewhat similar to what is being proposed here. But Assistant Town Administrator Megan Eldridge had reached out to Mr. Preventure to see if he'd be willing to join us. This evening, which he's kindly done. And as you'll see in the packet, the board received back the beginning of the month notice from DCR regarding property. Near the Headwaters Bog. And so, as you know, there is an article working its way through the community preservation process, which will then come to town meeting. Which regards the sale of land from an individual to the Harwich Conservation Trust. Intermediaries in that deal, if you will, would be the town of Harwich. And for a portion of it, an intermediary would also be the Department of Conservation and Recreation. So the first item, Mr. Chairman, is if the board wants to authorize you to sign a certificate of announcement. And that is a procedural requirement for the town to give notice. That the Department of Conservation and Recreation is considering acquiring a certain parcel. And then tandem with that is whether the board would consider waiving the requirement of the 120 day notice. And just, you know, point to the calendar that 120 days would actually get us past town meeting. So in the hope of educating the board or answering your questions, I'd like to tag out and turn it right over to Sean Preventure if I could, sir.
Good evening, Sean. We'll turn it over to you then.
Thank you. Good evening, everybody. Thank you for having me. Joe, thanks so much for the great introduction. I thought I was gonna have to say all that and you did it much better than I.
Told you I'd remember.
So it's it's pretty, it's a pretty bureaucratic thing we're dealing with here. Whenever the DCR is looking to acquire a piece of land for protection under Article 97. We have to follow regulations that say that we have to both do a public announcement, which we've essentially already done here. And that the announcement form is signed and that's in. That we also notify public officials and elected officials, so the two sort of separate things that are moving in tandem. We're looking at purchasing as part of the partnership project that Joe talked about, 1.38 acres on. The north side of Headwaters Drive, right where the rail trail intersects with Headwaters Drive. So if you're heading north there, it's the parcel up on the right hand side, right at the corner of the bogs. It's a it's a it would be a it makes a lot of sense for DCR to pick up this piece as part of this partnership project. It would help protect the corner. In the in the intersection of the of the rail trail there. And also help protect the view shed for the future as part of the larger conservation effort. So as Joe said, we're looking to have the public announcement signed tonight to start our 60 day clock. Meaning we can't close on the project until 60 days after that piece of paper is signed. And the second thing we're looking for is that as the second part of the regulation says that we cannot close. Until 120 days after public officials are notified. If you do the math, 120 days gets us right up into June. Our fiscal year is June 30th to close and. We really try to avoid whenever we can having all of our conservation projects pile up in June. They always do. It just works out that way, unfortunately, but we're looking to have that 120 days waived. So that will shorten our timeline during which we can close down to 60.
Okay, thank you, Sean.
Does that make sense?
I I think it does and what we're looking at is even though they're tied together, it's two separate actions tonight. So, Don?
Yeah, I have a question before I do anything, Mr. Chair. Thanks for coming, Sean. I appreciate the state's willingness to participate, but. Just for my own edification clarification, as well as the public, so they know what this is. The property is northwest on, you know, that you're interested in as part of the part of the parcel that you're interested in?
Actually, no, it would it would be north northeast of the intersection of Headwaters in the rail trail. So right at that point, the rail trail is heading north and south. Headwaters runs east west.
Yeah.
It would be at 2 o'clock.
Yeah, I understand that. So this wouldn't impede in any way if we go ahead with our own purchase, the access to the pond, for instance. For the public.
The other piece on the other side of the rail trail? No, it would not.
All I wanted to know is which side of the rail trail it was on and the public is probably just as interested in that, so thank you.
They're complimentary.
Okay.
With that, Mr. Chair, I'd be willing to make a motion, but I'm gonna have, I'm gonna wind up having to wobble my way through this. Let's see, I move that we authorize the chair to sign a certificate of announcement for DCR number P dash 000974 pursuant to. 301 CMR 51 dot O2, section two, which states the Department of Conservation and Recreation is considering acquiring a 1.38 acre parcel. Of land located in Harwich known as Headwaters Drive, located in Assessors Map 81 parcel G42 dash four dash two. For conservation and or recreation purposes.
Second.
Second, any other discussion?
Mr. Chairman, just clarification, if I may, that was Assessors Map 81 parcel G2 dash four dash two. I believe it might have been stated as G42, so that's G2 dash G2 dash four dash two.
G2, I'm sorry, yeah, G2 dash four dash two. That's what it has on.
Okay, we have a motion in a second. Other discussion? Now I'll take a roll call. I'm an aye, Don?
Aye.
Ed?
Aye.
Thank you. And then, Don, do you wish to?
Yes, I do.
Make a motion on the other item.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Moving on, I moved that we waived 120 day notice period is required by 301 CMR 51 dot point O8. Section LB, is that 1B or LB?
1B.
1B, section 1B pursuant to DCR number P dash 000974. The 1.3 acre parcel of land located on Assessors Map 81 parcel G2 dash four dash two.
Good job, Don. Do your second?
Second.
Any other discussion? Take a roll call. Ed?
Aye.
Don?
Aye.
And I'm an aye.
And that was authorized the chair to sign also.
Authorized, yes, thank you. And we've had a lot of discussion this going forward, but. And uh, we've had a lot of discussion this going forward, but uh, a lot of debate, so uh, it's moving forward from the Mars stand now.
Thank you, Sean.
Thank you, Sean.
All right, take care, and good luck with the arboretum, that was a great item.
Thank you.
You need to come down and visit it.
I will. All right, good night, thank you.
Also, thank you, Mr. Chair, I'd also like to thank Elaine and uh, Michael Lock.
Michael Locker on the line too, thank you for that. I was gonna recognize him, but we're moving so so quickly tonight, I I didn't want to uh, discuss it more.
I wouldn't like us.
Joe, move next to, next item?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, as you're seeing the packet, it's the request for approval of annual entertainment licenses. Uh, the first, they're both for four hundred East. First, the weekday would be Wednesday, Friday, Saturday, five PM to ten PM um, outside, and um, the second would be four hundred, Sunday, two PM to six PM outside. And I can tell you that for each of those requests, um, you'll see that they were uh, reduced from previous years.
Mr. Chair, is it your pleasure to have these packaged as one motion, or do you want them done separately?
I think we're gonna do them as one motion, the same uh, establishment.
Right, and I'd like to make a motion that we vote to approve the annual entertainment license renewals for the four hundred East, weekday, Wednesday, Friday, Saturday, five PM to ten PM outside, and also approve, you know, four hundred East application for Sunday uh, annual entertainment outside, two PM to six PM.
Second.
Any discussion? Now I'll take a roll call, Ed?
Aye.
Don?
Aye.
And I'm an aye. Thank you for that, Joe, and now we'll move to uh, old business, and uh, Joe, this is the uh, and Mr. Carol's on for this as well, this is a budget discussion.
Uh, no, Mr. Chairman, before that, we've got our ongoing discussion about any, everything related to the comprehensive wastewater management plan, uh, and then the second item would be related to the uh, budget.
Okay, that's different than the agenda.
I apologize, Chairman, no, I I apologize, I skipped right over my item A.
Okay.
So uh, thank you, Mr. Chairman, uh, and to correct myself. So um, as I had mentioned last week in the presentation of the budget, uh, and we do have the Finance Director available this evening as well. Uh, this is uh, your first opportunity of two uh, would be this evening and next Monday evening uh, before you're compelled by the Charter to pass along the budget of the Administrator, and as the Charter says, with or without amendment. Uh, and so as I mentioned last week, it's on your agenda this evening. If there's any potential amendments that the board would like to consider tonight, and again, you'll have an opportunity for further amendments or any amendments uh, next Monday, the twenty-second, before being transmitted in that whatever form you finish with to the Finance Committee.
Uh, thank you, Joe, the only thing that uh, uh, catches my attention on the uh, summary page is the uh, Monomoy School uh, Budget, which which I want to bring back uh, Joe, for uh, further discussion next Monday uh, on that item.
Uh, yes, Mr. Chairman, and thank you, as a follow-up to the uh, special meeting uh, that you participated in as a Board of Selectmen uh, with the Chatham Select Board last Wednesday, and the uh, Monomoy Regional School Committee. Uh, we know that the school committee meeting is later this week, and so we're hoping to have this topic uh, specific to the budget for Monomoy come back on the twenty-second. Uh, and a- as we all took from that meeting, as I understood it, uh, hopefully that uh, the two towns of the school district uh, would be able to come to some sort of relief uh, in the short term for the town of Harwich, uh, given that our assessment um, went up over a million dollars while Chatham's was uh, reduced overall by quarter of a million dollars. And so um, we do expect to have something come out of the Thursday School Committee meeting uh, that can hopefully impact upon this board next Monday.
Uh, Don?
Yeah, and for the record, because I opined about this during that meeting also, but I I just wanna repeat it again. Those changes were precipitated precisely because of a drop in enrollment on Chatham's side, where we are picking up a disparate percentage, and I know the conversation uh, at times centered around uh, a member of the Chatham Board saying that he uh, we were seeking, again, an offer of relief. And I don't think anything could be true, less true than that, this is an matter of uh, equity to the town. Uh, we are simply not in a position to continue to subsidize the current operation in the manner that it is, especially if we're contemplating a budget deficit, so thi- this is a substantial portion of what we're facing. It's not a hand up from somebody, it's a recognition that a disparity has grown after the beginning of the establishment of this school system. And it it's egregious, and it results in us having to subsidize a school that's not in this town.
Thank you, Don, uh, other comments? I I agree, I think to take home from our meeting that uh, last week was uh, as Don says, uh, short-term equity discussion on what we're uh, super uh, subsidizing, and then uh, some direction primarily from the school committee on uh, moving ahead on a long-term, when we started addressing the uh, agreement itself. So there are two actions, but our immediate concern is getting ready for town meeting. Joe, I, otherwise, it's uh, yeah, I think the budget's well put together, you know, we've we've taken uh, some drastic cuts with the economy in, and Carol, uh, nice job putting it very clear. You know, I guess we all wish the information was a little more positive, but it is what it is at this point. Until the pandemic is over and we're back to normal, we will live with it. Carol, do you want, and then I get to you, Don, but Carol, you have a comment?
Uh, I've been speaking with the golf department, um, and they are a little concerned about the revenue that we have estimated for FY twenty-two. They would like to see that increased, um, that estimated revenue increase from one million, five hundred and eighty-five thousand um, to one point eight million dollars, so that's a two hundred and fifteen thousand dollar increase. Um, their rates have increased, and when we look back historically, they believe, truly believe that they're going to come in um, to support the one point eight million dollars.
Well, that's good, they can use that on their, that's a separate, they can use that to help fund some of their improvements they're going after. Thank you, Carol.
Mr. Chair.
Don, I'm sorry, I'll cut you off before.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, um, I wanna repeat something I said before, I mean, I was a selectman for six years from two thousand to two thousand and six. Uh, I've been government geek for a lot of years. Uh, the team of Carol and Joe have produced a budget that's uh, it's truthful and transparent, more so than I have seen in the last twenty years in this town. It's accessible to town people, it's not hiding anything, it's well laid out, and I really appreciate the effort on both your parts.
You know, uh, for all the reasons you've said, and not to be selfish, but it also shortens our discussion in our meetings, which is never a a bad, a bad, uh, not a bad thing, because we uh, we actually can understand it, but we'll come back then, uh, you know, as we said, I think, Joe, the only question was primarily our focus right now would be, we want to work uh, collaboratively, collaboratively with uh, Chatham, because we we want to be a part of this regional system, but we uh, but we're looking for the uh, the financial, Joe, where it was all.
I think Ed had a comment.
Ed?
Yeah, just just a question, uh, Carol indicated that uh, uh, the golf course of it have asked, uh, suggested that their uh, revenue figure be increased. I know um, last year it was held down because of the limitation they had on uh, starting times because of the pandemic. Um, it's uh, uh, I'm not exactly sure what the estimate is now, oh, the pen, of us getting past that, so they may come up with similar uh, restrictions this coming season. So I'd I'd ask them to make uh, um, if we do increase their revenue figure, uh, if they asked, if they could be asked to uh, do an analysis to be sure that uh, they're gonna be able to make that.
Yeah, Joe?
Yeah, thank you, and to Selectman McManus' point, that was going to be um, um, my discussion point, based on what the Finance Director, uh, by the way, that was a gentle reminder for me, so thank you, Carol. Um, is wha- what I would like from the board is uh, we can come back next week uh, with precisely that analysis that Selectman McManus um, has has recommended, uh, because I would be seeking uh, direction and a vote from the board uh, no later than next Monday on those uh, revenue projections, if you will. And just very quickly, Selectman McManus is spot on, uh, we know, if you look at the materials that are in the paperwork, uh, the preceding years, uh, they eclipsed one point eight million in uh, fiscal years eighteen and nineteen, and um, were impacted in twenty and part of twenty-one uh, by COVID nineteen, so I think uh, that analysis is, would be timely, uh, but I do think we're also going to find that the, it should support their recommendations. So um, what I'd like to do is take this discussion then tonight, and come back with something formal for next week on this.
Thank you.
Yeah, I think Selectman McManus' uh, direction is helpful.
Thank you, Ed and Joe. Other comments, questions, we'll, if not, we'll bring this back again on the agenda next week, as Joe's uh, recommended. Uh, Joe, next item is uh, is on your uh, on you as well.
Yes, I was, I was so eager to get past the budget and get into this, believe it or not, um, uh, budget to wastewater. Um, so, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, a- as you know, we have uh, a recurring theme and discussion, everything related to the Comprehensive Wastewater Management Plan. And as you've heard me say for several weeks, if not months now, uh, the group of four meets uh, every week ahead of a Selectman's meeting, um, I have to amend that statement going forward to happily say that we're now a group of five. Um, I've asked the Assistant Town Administrator to participate uh, because she knows a little bit about this project, having been the Health Director. And so uh, Megan joining the group of five has been uh, very helpful and immediate uh, benefit for us. And so, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, what you have first tonight is really just um, uh, my words, no one else's, so I'll let Dan correct it when I say it, but um, more of what we're looking for is a thought piece or a discussion piece for the board. Um, as you heard us, uh, heard us, meaning staff, say, um, we've been working on uh, all matters related to the Comprehensive Wastewater Management Plan for several months now, uh, in, with an eye towards town meeting um, and to be prepared for whatever topics, if any, come before town meeting. Um, part and parcel with that is a discussion on the CWMP itself, as as you all know better than I, uh, this is a document that was finalized, uh, it'll be five years next month. Uh, or another way to say that is it'll be five years old in two weeks. And so, uh, for my purposes, it's the opportune time to take another dive into the CWMP. Uh, given the introduction of uh, new staff, present company included, uh, it's an appropriate time to get back into the CWMP. So the discussion we had as a group uh, related to this topic, uh, and I will turn it over to our Water Wastewater Superintendent in a moment, but is really to seek direction from the board uh, as to how you would like us to parse through uh, the CWMP uh, to focus our attention on revisions. Uh, so with that, Mr. Chairman, I hope I haven't stifled the wastewater superintendent, would rather gave him a little bit of a boost to begin uh, his presentation.
Good evening, Dan.
How are you? So, over the past several months, uh, there's been a lot of discussion of the town's Comprehensive Wastewater Management Plan. And really, what is a logical path forward for Harwich? Um, while the discussions have been informative, they're really missing, or they're really part of a bigger conversation, which is revising the CWMP and filing a notice of project change with regulatory agencies. What I'd like to propose tonight is a strategy for making what I'll refer to as targeted revisions to the CWMP for the purpose of incorporating the most up-to-date technical data, reviewing the town's desire for future growth and build-out, updating or revising the construction sequence, alternative technologies, and updating our cost models. In addition, I will look to the board for any other additional items to be considered for revision. Once we identify what we're looking to tackle, town staff will work through the CWMP to extract applicable sections and assemble them into a targeted revision schedule, which will identify the specific sections in appropriate order we should revise the CWMP. The intent here is to ensure that we aren't nullifying our work as we move out through the process. So with input from the board, staff will work to gather the information relative to the items within our targeted revision schedule, where it can then be presented to the board for consideration. At a high level, this approach is intended to identify what we're looking to change, provide an understanding of what's currently written to the board, to ourselves, and to the public, to understand what the town's desire is to move forward, and what we wanna make uh, for these revisions, and bring back a recommendation with supporting documentation. So there's gonna be many items here that are gonna require input from the public, from boards, committees, as well as consultants. Um, later this evening, the board's going to be looking to take action um, on the sewer CAD contract. You know, great, tha- that would be a great opportunity, should it move forward, for us to to begin this process with a kickoff meeting. You know, to really get a better handle on where we're at today and what direction we're heading in. I guess that's a a general overview of of what I'm proposing, and I guess I would turn it back to to see what your thoughts are or for any suggestions on what difference we could do.
Uh, I'd like to direct your taking, Dan. Uh, I would ask you to put that in a form as a uh, uh, email to us with the dot points that we can digest and fill in the blanks. Because I do think that uh, you know, we developed a CWMP uh, based on MEP, repeating too many acronyms here, that provided a uh, a good plan in the direction going forward. But in the scheme of things, you know, usually, I think, in other contexts, that's sort of our overall strategy, what we're looking at now is the tactics, how do we get there? And as both you and Joe's inferred, that needs to be reviewed at least every five years, as we get new data, new technology. So now's the time to uh, put these, put this forward, so. Uh, I think you've provided some order, and your team provides some order into that. So uh, that's the beginning of the discussion, I think you lay it out, and we'll just keep bringing, bring that up. Don?
Yeah, recognizing that Baby Ben's gonna hit eight uh, in about thirty seconds. The first thing I need to point out to Dan, because Dan's on target with a couple of things here, and actually, all of this, and I really appreciate the professional approach that we are now taking uh, towards this uh, you know, administration, but this, that phrase, desired growth, keeps sticking in my craw. That was the predication for an awful lot of uh, assumptions based on the sewer volume. And I gotta point out to you, we're seven years after uh, that assumption was first floated in the executive uh, summary. Where's the zoning change that would actually flesh that out? Uh, here comes eight o'clock. Well, at least nobody needs to wear a watch when I'm around. What I'm, what I'm saying is, there has been no zoning proposal, it was, it was a colossal implosion when they had a discussion about the East Harwich Village uh, Center. And there were a number of hearings done, and that was before I came back into office, uh, five, six years ago, there has never been something that actually fleshed out that desire from the part of the town to more fully develop East Harwich. And I am not sure, I mean, the McLardys have said this before, and I'm gonna just say it again. One of the obvious ways to attenuate the progression of uh, nitrogen uh, loading is you don't build as much. You try to hold back on what you're doing, and right now, if we, we have not done anything that would uh, in- indicate that we have a desire in this town to replicate another Marshalls or TJ Maxx in this town, and another this in this town, and another that in this town. There are, in proximity to us, are those things, most of our robust growth has been like Zootie and uh, Out of Cape Healthcare, or uh, Fontaine Medical Facility, which are upscale, they ca- they hire people at living wages in. Fontaine Medical Facility, which are upscale. They hire people at living wages and honest to God, unless somebody could show me that the planning board's really working on something that would more fully develop East Harwich, that should be taken into account because whatever our desire is doesn't mean damn thing unless it gets to town meeting and gets approved, which it hasn't. That's the first thing. And the second thing is, how far away from we are from getting the actual measurements about the attenuation, the flushing attenuation methodology that we were doing on Muddy Creek in finding out some real numbers. Initially, that was supposed to be in the middle of January, but that's obviously gone, come and gone.
Yeah, so I guess let me hit the the second question first. It's easiest. So we did have a meeting with Pleasant Bay Alliance and all the communities, and they did go through the preliminary numbers, but we're still haven't seen the report. I actually thought about it today, meant to email Carol and haven't done it yet. To the first question, that's really, it may be desire was the wrong word. But exactly what you you just brought up is is what I'm suggesting that we bring to the table to 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 talk about. My understanding now is that, you know, the CWMP, although it's not a zoning tool and it's not a zoning document, it speaks a lot about the East Harwich Village, you know, that that no longer seems to be a desire, again, to use that word, of the community. So so those are the items that, you know, I'm hoping that we can build that list. And then, you know, Griffin and I can go through the CWMP and find every reference of that and bring it back and say, these are the things that we need to amend. And this is how we recommend we do that.
But Joe?
Well, just to follow on, and Dan, I was going to help you on that first part of it, but to build on what Dan just said, and you know, this is what I meant in my preamble earlier when I talk about revisiting. You know, revisiting is not the right word when you're talking about me as administrator, Dan, Griffin, and Carol, because we weren't present at the creation or at the table when these things were discussed. But to Selectman Howell's questions and and, you know, to whether we say desiring growth or not desiring growth, the point that I take on this is we're also in the midst of beginning the process of our local comprehensive plan, which I know Selectman Howell knows better than most. That's a decennial effort. And it just dovetails nicely with, we will be reexamining our local comprehensive plan right at the same time when we can reengage in our comprehensive wastewater management plan. And to further this and to foreshadow for the next item, it ties into the pending hiring of a Director of Planning and Community Development. And so it makes it very easy for me to develop my interview questions. You know, they're going to be relative to not only planning, but the local comprehensive plan and the CWMP. And so that's what I mean about, I don't want to use phrases like perfect storm or anything like that. However, there is there is fortune in being able to revisit the CWMP five years after it was finalized, while we're also getting into our decennial effort on the local comprehensive plan and bringing in another, you know, professional manager on planning.
Don?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Totally agree. I mean, I was involved, heavily involved in the discussions relative to Lowe's and Dennis. And they were 100% linked toward their comprehensive plan. And you must have wanted that because you talked about that in the abstract here. This is a perfect opportunity to not just talk in the abstract, but to say, if you approve this, it will result in that.
Right.
And that discussion, to my mind, over the last 20 years, has never happened. We didn't say, okay, you approve this comprehensive plan and it talks about bill, bill, bill. What does that mean in terms of what we're going to have to do to remediate? I think it's an important discussion to have because there's a direct correlation between the two.
Larry?
Ed?
If you have a comment, make it, go ahead. Comment after you.
Well, my comment was, yeah, I think that's the direction we're going. We've been five years. There was a lot of interest, you know, five years ago on the in East Harwich. That interest is faded. We don't have to stick with that. That's no, that's no longer an interest. You know, the CWMP was not meant to be the controlling documents, all the other things that zoning and other issues that we have involved. So I think we're going in the right direction. Let's go back and revisit those and see whether, and, you know, most likely that one's not, there's not interest here now. It's not a problem. We're really looking at it. Let me get that first and I could get you, Ed.
Yeah, you know, Joe brings up, I think, the most important point is that we're, we are launching on a redo of a revisit of our comprehensive plan. And the comprehensive plan takes in many things. Both commercial development and residential development. And, you know, the previous efforts that we did, what, five years ago on the East Harwich Village tended to center on what would happen to the the commercial center of the village. And obviously, there, in the process, there wasn't any particular agreement on that between the the planning board at the time and the folks that were on the study committee. Larry and I took a shot at trying to bring those two sides together, which turned out to be fruitless. And that's why nothing went to town meeting to enact any of those discussions. But as we go forward, you know, I think our biggest, one of our biggest considerations that's been brought up is providing housing for working people that we need necessarily to be in our town. And I think we're going to have to look at that seriously in all parts of town. We know from history that in terms of building, housing that's affordable, if you continue to restrict yourself to one acre lots, you drive the price up substantially. And our folks who work here and make their living in our seasonal economy can't afford that sort of housing. And, you know, the, I guess, you run into an issue of if you want to to make it more affordable, you want to minimize the costs of providing wastewater attenuation by limiting the amount of development, then you obviously are going to continue to drive the cost up for those working people that we're trying to find housing for. So it's, you know, that's suffice it to say, as we go through that planning process, that's going to be a difficult balancing act to maintain between having affordable housing and, on the one hand, it not limiting the amount of additional growth so much that the remaining housing becomes so expensive that probably none of us on the screen tonight could afford it. So I think, you know, before we just start taking those sections out of the CWMP and revamping it based on just eliminating those sections, we have to, at some point, make those other decisions through the comprehensive planning process about what we want our town to become in terms of who it can house, who can live here, et cetera.
Don, before I get to you, I know Clara, you wish to make a comment. Then I'll get back to you, Don.
Mr. Chairman, could I may before we go open to the public?
Okay.
And I apologize because I think I've committed one of the cardinal sins I tried to guard against. I think it might be helpful for the viewing audience for me to take a quick moment to say the difference between the two plans that I've referenced. And so I know the board knows what the comprehensive wastewater management plan or CWMP is. And I know everybody on this call knows it, but I think for the benefit of the audience, perhaps watching at home or elsewhere later, the local comprehensive plan is meant to be our 10-year deep dive, as as Selectman McManus really talked about some of the values that we would want to incorporate into that. And so when you talk about your local comprehensive plan, it's precisely that. You know, it's this mega document that is developed over a year or two of conversation with the the general public on what do we want to focus on and what do we want to be over the next 10 years? Certainly stakeholders such as the Board of Selectmen and Planning Board, Zoning Board, and any other boards. And then just really having a series of discussions to then create this compendium that talks about our focus for the next 10 years. And so that's why I'm suggesting tonight, as wastewater superintendent puts out there, as we talk about going back, you know, diving into the CWMP for a five-year checkup, the timing I feel works out fortuitously well to dovetail that with the comprehensive wastewater management plan. So I hope that is less confusing for people when I say CWMP versus LCP. And that should be the last time I say it like that. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Don, let me, let me get to Don first, Clara. That's okay. Don?
Yeah, I just want to make one thing clear. Of those people sitting here, I'm the only one who largely wrote the first comprehensive plan when I was the vice chair of the planning board in the 90s. So I'm familiar with the process. And I can assure you that there was a recognition in that plan of how fragile East Harwich was in particular because of its drinking water resource protection district and the zones of contribution to our drinking water and where the water flows, quite frankly, into the embankments. So it's in answer to Mr. McManus's comment, I can also say that I'm the chair of the Housing Trust. We have absolutely nothing planned for East Harwich because there are six other villages. And we have a record, I mean, I haven't, I've spent a lot of years being able to balance being involved with some of the biggest purchases we made for open space in this town at the same time as being an advocate for affordable housing. Because once you have the discussion, it's pretty clear where you should build and where you shouldn't build. To to say, given where we are with the trust, especially now, we would only be envisioning an expansion of opportunities in East Harwich for 40Bs that were not part of the town, that were hostile 40Bs at worst, and at best, 25% affordable housing that just builds more housing so that you can get a bump on your 10% goal, which isn't really, it's like a carrot in front of the horse. You never actually arrive at the carrot. So just from the perspective of the Housing Trust, we've got two projects, one dig that we are working on in executive session, and one small, and neither of them is anywhere near East Harwich.
I think you point out, our discussions point out, there's discussion yet to come. Clara? Or Sandy? Did you have your hand raised?
Yes. I am so relieved and excited that you have this on the agenda tonight. I love what's been laid out to revise and revisit. And the way Dan described it, you mentioned earlier tonight, Larry, about how open-minded you are, and I see that being confirmed again in this conversation. And as far as the affordable housing question that Ed brought up, I recently took a class called the Economics of Sustainability. And I think that I speak for other people, too. When I say that, we, the Cape Codders, we really feel the limit, that Cape Cod has limits, intrinsic physical ecological limits. And none of us want to damage Cape Cod. We don't want to see fish kills, algae blooms, you know, loss of species and woodlands. That matters to people. And I strongly believe that there are solutions where people can live here and use the land in a responsible way, respecting the limits that that the land imposes on us. Because we're within the habitat. The habitat is bigger than us, and we are a subset of that. And our economy is a subset of human society. That's there for the benefit of humans, and the humans are here as part of something larger than ourselves. So the way I see it is his, for, you know, 50 to 70 years, we have been relying on the ability to build a whole bunch of new construction continuously and and keep on growing our economic base. And we're reaching a point where people are realizing that that's not going to be a way of life that's sustainable going forward. So we have to acknowledge that, and we have to just recognize these boundaries, these limits. And so we may not be able to always have an expanding economy for more visitors or more tourists. We may have to live more simply in order to respect the planet. But I think that you will find that that people are ready for that. And I wanted to share that I, we have contacted Conservation Law Foundation, the vice president. What's his name?
Chris Killian.
Chris Killian. And he is aware of some of what's going on in Harwich. And I know that we've heard about threatening letters and the lawsuit hanging over our heads. And I just wanted to share that it really is good news, after talking to him, that I believe that what they are interested in seeing happen is the same thing that I'm interested in seeing happen and many other residents. And basically, one of their biggest concerns would be how slow to take effect our CWMP might prove to be. And searing projects in general can be, you know, we have a 40-year timeline. And that's going to take a long, long time to bring benefits to some embankments. And I've learned myself about the the eelgrass and the benthic animals that once they do get some relief from the overwhelming amount of nitrogen we're pumping in, those habitats being restored and coming back will begin to regenerate and rebuild the water bodies. They'll begin to denitrify through their own biological processes. And so one of the things that we can revisit is just the speed in which we bring about relief and things like the fertilizer reduction, things like buffer plantings, putting IA systems in unattenuated areas, restricting construction. We can bring a really quick benefit, which can help the systems to start to regenerate. And that would also be very, that would be the type of thing that Conservation Law Foundation would like to see happen. I think that's what a lot of people would like to see happen. And I also would love to see this discussion about the growth, about limits on future growth as an option in also reducing our nitrogen pollution. Thank you all.
Sandy?
Yeah. Thank you, Mr. Chair. And I I am also excited. I had some stuff prepared, and I've pushed it aside. It's more in the nitty gritty. I feel like this discussion has been about the big picture. And I think that is a great place to start. And so I didn't want to devolve the discussion into the nitty gritty. We have a lot of those types of conversations. But I feel very optimistic and hopeful about the overall, you know, the recognition of kind of we need to address the big picture. And I think that's been very well done by all the members on this board. So thank you to all, all. And then I think the comment from Selectman Ed McManus gets into kind of those, the nitty gritty. Those are not easy solutions. And I look forward to the ongoing discussion on those, you know, all the details that go into a CWMP. And and as my wife said, you know, I about the limits, I always think of the National Seashore. And then I picture my my time. I was in New Jersey for eight years. I worked in Lavallette after the storm that crashed you, Hurricane Sandy. And also in Princeton, New Jersey. It was devastated by that storm. But just growing up on the Cape, living in New Jersey for eight years and seeing what development development could produce, and then coming back and having a reappraisal for being able to swim, you know, pretty much to find a water hole anywhere, and really appreciating what Cape Cod is. And I think if you start with that, you know, and look at the National Seashore, nobody would say that we could enjoy that if there weren't limits placed. But nobody here would probably say, hey, we probably shouldn't have done those limits. And so with that context, then we have to go in and kind of see, how do we alleviate, you know, housing for people that are firefighters, nurses? I have a CNA as a tenant, and I have a firefighter. He's just been appointed to the Brewster Fire Station. I hope I'm not blowing up anything. But I'm proud of him. He's a hard worker, and I'm proud to be able to provide that affordable housing to them. So I know it's a very real issue, and it's not an easy solution. You know, so I look forward, again, to kind of those types of discussions. I love numbers, you know, kind of the numbers on sewers, IA, all of these things that will go into the decision-making. But for tonight, I'd like to just say thank you for really bringing out the big picture.
Yeah. Thank you, Sandy. Thank you, Clara. Joe and Dan and your, we call it your gang of four or five? What's the word?
We're up to five now, Mr. Chairman.
Gang of five?
Group of five, but if, Mr. Chairman, if I could.
Good, some good steps. Could you email that to us, then we can fill in the spots? And we have a, and Joe, we have a way to step through this, a way that makes sense. Because we, you're right. I appreciate you very much putting this together because we've been kind of going a lot of different directions. We now need to pull it together and take one subject at a time and see where we go.
Mr. Chairman, if I may, and I don't wish to engage in a give and take or a back and forth, but I do think it's important for me to sort of put out a somewhat of a different narrative than what we've just heard a moment ago. With all due deference to the Conservation Law Foundation, or, you know, CLF, that's not a motivating influence for what we and staff are working on. We know that there's the, you know, the potential threats that are out there. But I just want to remind everybody that the town of Harwich has been engaging in comprehensive wastewater management planning for several decades, and it's because of the 208 program with EPA. And, you know, we're part of the coalition here on Cape Cod that are all working towards bettering our water systems and all of that and removing nitrogen. And it's not in response or because of any one advocacy group that's out there. And so, you know, that is certainly part of the narrative. But as I said at the onset of this discussion tonight, we and staff are motivated by first making sure that we offer information for you, the board, to continue to make informed decisions on behalf of the town. We're motivated by any number of pressing issues that, with all the things we're talking about, what we're not suggesting is that we're not stopping. You know, one of the things we heard in common from George Hoyfelder and Brian Dudley was that if there was agreement, is that we need to continue the progress that we're making on attenuating the nitrogen, and that's in support of the 208 program that we've been a part of. So, you know, if we make comments related to CLF, they're not an influencer in this town for what we're working on, and we're not working under, you know, a threatening cloud, if you will. We're trying to actively progress towards a decades-long discussion that's been happening here on Cape Cod and here in Harwich. And so I think that's an important distinction to make, that the town of Harwich is operating in response and in partnership to the 208 program, and anything that came after that or related to that just happens to be ancillary. And so I just want, you know, continue to remind why we, the group of five, are working on this and why we have this coming up every week to the board. And I hope that made sense and was helpful. And then, Mr. Chairman, if I can use a segue to your next topic, there is a Scrivener's Error, which I know caused a member of the press to reach out to me and ask who the Chatham Sewer Coordinator was going to be. And my response was, I'm not really sure, because that's meant to be Chatham Sewer Coordination. So I apologize for the error in that, because it, those three simple letters really do change the whole complexion of that discussion. But if you're ready to move on to that topic, Mr. Chairman.
I'm ready to move on to the next topic. Thank you very much. This is a continued discussion.
Thank you. I then turn it right over to our wastewater superintendent to talk about coordinating.
Hi again. So last Friday, I participated in a meeting, as well as Griffin, with members of Chatham and GHD, their engineering firm. And these were an extension of our regular construction coordination meetings, but I did take that opportunity to ask some questions, if you will. With respect to, as you may all be familiar with the wastewater budget, one of the things that we're still waiting on hashing out is the contract operations budget figure. And that really is going to rely upon information from, and input from Chatham. So I did speak with Bob Dunkinson over in Chatham, and his recommendation was to coordinate and submit, send over a letter ultimately explaining what we're looking to do. So I have reached out and spoke with Weston and Sampson to start brainstorming, you know, really exactly what we're going to be looking for in the day-to-day, as well as continued ongoing maintenance, the intermittent stuff like pumping wet wells, jetting sewer mains, that sort of stuff. So we can get a manpower, a better understanding of manpower, at which point we would then work with Chatham to refine their contract with Weston and Sampson. So that, really the big takeaway from that meeting, I guess it'd be, open any questions?
Thank you, Dan. I don't, because you're in the middle of the discussion, so I think, continue on.
Yeah.
Don or Ed, I'm, nothing to add to that.
No.
Thank you, Will. We'll take that as information, and we'll move on then, Dan.
The agenda was due before the meeting, so we put it in as a placeholder, not knowing what the context of the conversation would be, so.
Well, I apologize for a short discussion point.
All right.
Okay. Joe, moving on to the next item on the agenda.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and I will endeavor to be brief, because at this point, there's no action, but this is more of an update. So as we've mentioned, you know, our town planner has retired, but she's graciously served in a consulting role in the interim. And as I've mentioned in the fall, that that's related to the reorganization that I've been working on, both in the administration department first and then the town planner. And so what you have in your packet is the proposed job description that I and Megan have been working with members of SEIU, the bargaining unit that represents this position, on the impact of the changes. And so as you'll see in Megan's memorandum to you and I, really the salient point is the proposed job description, which has been tacitly approved by SEIU today pending one other item. They'd like to see an organization chart for what I'm envisioning for the organizational structure known as community development, and it's something I will get to them shortly. And I will bring this back to the board, but what you will eventually be asked to endorse is the reorganization of the community development organizational structure. As you know, that's not a division, as we understand it in the charter, but it was more of an organizational structure that was never fully built out. And so the linchpin to all of that would be this position of Director of Planning and Community Development. So it's a change in title, and it's a modest increase in responsibility. And that increase is, as I make reference in the job description, that this individual would be the primary advocate to work with the departments within community development. And primary advocate is meant to help me find a software system that can succeed a seller and that can get us back into the e-permitting game on a far greater level than we have before. So similar to the earlier comment by our wastewater superintendent, this topic was put on the agenda, not knowing what the outcome would be. Pleased to hear the, again, the preliminary approval of the SEIU Association regarding this change, because I think it's important going forward. But the net effect for the board this evening is simply an update by me. No action yet necessary.
Okay. But thank you, Joe. Sounds like it's very much in flux. I did have, on the draft that you gave in our package, I did have one comment. And that is you, this position has an oversight role in your job description of community development, but it doesn't describe what oversight means. It then kind of backs away from that later on in the description. So I think for me to make it work, it has to have some overall responsibility for the, how we have defined oversight for that department to work as part of our management team.
So if I could, Mr. Chairman, if you go under essential duties and responsibilities, so following on that definition, one, two, three, the third bullet point down talks about coordinates department activities with other departments as needed. And that's what's meant, because the other part of this that was, in my opinion, flawed in the previous structure, is that, as you know from the posting recently in the new hire for the Assistant Town Administrator, the Assistant Town Administrator by job description, not only definition, but essential responsibilities, has a direct line oversight of community development and community services. So this isn't meant to be a management over community development, more that this is the primary person to work with those other departments to identify critical needs. And from my analysis of what's been happening for the community development over the last three or four years since it was established, is we were missing that one link. And so I know my predecessor toyed with the idea of the planner, the health director, the conservation agent, or the building commissioner being the sort of lead of that group. What I decided was to have the planner, given that background of education and experience as a planner, to tie into the overall concept of work within community development as a structure to support the overall team. But the management, if you will, still retains within administration through me and through my designee of the Assistant Town Administrator. And so as we, as I got into discussions with SEIU, I did explain that that third paragraph talks about the, being the primary advocate. So the first person to speak to what the needs are to support the community development structure that many people that go, that when you could go to town hall, you know, went up to the second floor of town hall, knowing that they could speak to any one of those four departments. But behind the scenes, there was no official coordination between those departments. And that's what that is meant by the oversight of the organizational structure.
Thank you for that, Joe.
Thank you.
Other questions? Comments?
Larry?
Yes, who's Ed?
Ed? Sorry?
Yeah, and I'll bring these up privately with Joe, but I've read that fourth bullet point that he was just talking about, and I think with a, a couple of additional words, it could make that section much more specific in elucidating the issue that you brought up about being the, providing that oversight of the community development organizational structure.
Thank you. I'll follow up. I appreciate that.
Okay.
Thank you, Ed. Moving next then is contracts, and this is one I'm, we've discussed several times already. So I'm not sure whether we.
So you have discussed, Mr. Chairman, what I would like to just outline first is you have, it's a procurement. So you have the memo, the cover memo from me to the board. You've got the pre-approval checklist. You've got the contract language itself, and we have the post-procurement checklist. Long story short on this one, Mr. Chairman, as we said, majorities of both this board and the Board of Water and Wastewater Commissioners has endorsed the procurement. It's now literally time for the Board of Selectmen to endorse the contract, and that is by authorizing you as chairman to sign. I believe, let me see, nope, I apologize, we do have, so it would be for all members of the Board of Selectmen to sign.
Okay.
And that will be the last piece of this.
Larry?
I entertain a motion. We've, Ed?
I'd move that we approve the contract with GHD for the procurement of town-wide sewer CAD modeling services in the amount of $150,000.
Second. Other discussion? As I say, we discussed this through several meetings, and something be said for getting facts on our side, so I think this is a good step forward.
Thank you to Town Administrator and Dan and Griffin for getting this all put together. This is a big step forward.
Yep, they were making it work for it as well, so I guess that's positive. I'll take a vote, roll call vote, Dan? Don, rather? You can vote who you want. You can vote for Dan if you want.
Aye.
Ed?
Aye.
And I'm an aye, so we'll move forward on this one. Thanks again. We're down to Town Administrator's report.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and to you and members of the board, I have three quick announcements. And I think positive for the community, the first is Christine Menard, the Executive Director of the Family Pantry of Cape Cod, has asked me to announce that they are working on a grab-and-go food pickup at Montemoy High School on Sunday, March 21st, from 8:00 a.m. to 10:00 a.m. Everyone is welcome. There's no registration required. Recipients will be given a large full bag of non-perishable food items suitable for breakfast, lunch, and dinner, and a five-pound bag of apples. Each bag also will contain information on the Family Pantry of Cape Cod for families and individuals who might be struggling to put food on the table. This will be again on Sunday, excuse me, I think I said the date wrong. So it's Sunday, March 21st, 8:00 a.m. to 10:00 a.m. at Montemoy High School at 75 Oak Street here in Harwich. This will be a drive-through event in the rear of the high school and managed with social distancing to ensure the safety of volunteers and families. This is a rain-or-shine event. And then, Mr. Chairman and members, as you know, the great work that the Family Pantry does, not just here in Harwich, but honestly throughout Cape Cod. And this is a wonderful effort by them to just remind everybody that they're there, they have food available for people, and it's just a great way to remind people that there is help if they need it. And so that information has been shared with Channel 18, as well as with the Chamber of Commerce, and we will make sure to put that on our website as well. Secondly, we received word from the Montemoy Regional School Committee. As I mentioned earlier, there is a community forum scheduled. This community forum is on the future of Montemoy Elementary Schools, and that will take place on March 4th, 2021, from 6:30 to 8:00 p.m. And it's a Zoom event, and this is an invitation to all parents, caregivers, educators, and community members encouraged to attend to discuss Montemoy's elementary schools in the district. Again, that's a community forum on the future of Montemoy Elementary Schools, March 4th. That's from 6:30 to 8:00 p.m. by Zoom, and there's more information on the Montemoy Regional School District page. And then lastly, Mr. Chairman and members of the board, I don't know if our wastewater superintendent has departed, but very happy to announce that Dan has hired John Lang, who will be a secondary distribution operator, D2, for the Harwich Water Department. And he comes to us with a strong background in water service, and we're looking to have John start on, excuse me, February 23rd. So excited for Dan to add John to his team and to have a full complement, I believe, in the water department. And that concludes my report, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Joe. And you can take, ease up a bit then, Dan, I assume.
Hopefully.
Move to the Selectmen's reports. Don?
Don't have anything.
Ed?
Um.
Before Christmas, the Quanis Club, which I'm a member of, we did a rather successful sock collection drive here in in Harwich. We've been asked by the Hands of Hope Pantry in West Harwich to help out with doing a drive, a collection drive aimed at finding things for children, mittens, gloves, socks, and also because a lot of, a lot of children, they say, are spending a lot more time at home. Any sort of workbook, puzzle book, semi-educational material that they can use to, both for entertainment, but also to help with, help out with the time that they're missing in in school, doing work. We'll be getting that off next weekend. And we'll be getting announcements out of collection areas, sites around town. We're having some problem locating some sites because a lot of the stores are at this time not particularly open. So we'll be looking at approaching some more public facilities like fire departments and police departments, both here in Harwich and Orleans and in Eastham as areas in their lobbies where we'll have collection boxes. But we'll be providing further publicity in next week's papers, the Chronicle and the Cape Codder.
Thank you, Ed. I have nothing more to add, so entertain a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Roll call vote to adjourn. Don?
Aye.
Ed?
Aye.
And I'm an aye, so thank you all and enjoy the rest of the night.
Night, everybody.
Good night.